This evening for the council and the staff to talk about. And perhaps one or two other minor items. The first agenda item under the work session is discussion of short-term rentals. Jeff, do you have any introduction now you want to make, or we should go to Alex and Darren?
I think we'll just turn it over to Darren and Alex.
Well, thank you very much.
Darren, thank you, and Alex, thank you, and for the material you've already provided to us, but I think you may have some additional things that we're going to see this evening on that.
There won't be a lot of additional things that we're going to see tonight. Really, what I want to start talking about is, is there a potential approaches to potential regulation that you might want us to start looking into? Because there are plenty of models that are out there in the state right now. Plenty of models, you know, permitted uses, banning them, home stays, they're out there. So it's really when we have a discussion, what else do we want to, what do we want to approach, what do we want to look at going forward? I would, I'd also like to take, thank Brenda and Jenny.
Brenda's back in the back.
And Jenny, they've been very helpful in putting together some of the information for this, especially, especially that table. That table was created by those, by Brenda, so it's been very helpful. So where are we? Today, we're at, the council has received a lot of concern, we've heard a lot of concerns from residents in various parts of the community regarding short-term rentals, the impact of short-term rentals on the character of the neighborhood, that constant transition of people coming in and out that are, you know, in some people's opinion, eroding the confidence of people within that neighborhood. So from a, and we hear that, and they ask, well, do we have any regulations on that? And we really don't, there's really no regulations that we have on the books on short-term rentals. We don't have them defined, we don't have them mapped, so we really don't have a current regulatory approach. Currently, short-term rentals are not regulated by the PDO. There's no definition of what an STR is, or corresponding allowance for where an STR may locate. That would be one of the important things that, two of the important things that we'd have to do is, one, define what a short-term rental is, and that's generally less than 30 days, and then coming up with a zoning placement and indicating which zones that they may be able to locate in. STRs may currently locate in any residential district from single-family through mixed use. And I'm gonna slow it, go down to here, so you can see on this table, this table shows all of our residential zoning districts, and you can see on the right, R5 through R10 through RMF. So you'd see as a dwelling, single-family, a short-term rental could locate in all those zones. Go down to VCP, VR, VMU, anywhere where it's permitted on this, on this table, a short-term rental could currently locate. Any questions on that aspect? Jane?
You have a definition of dwelling. As a building with one or more dwelling units, used, intended, or designed to be used, rented, leased, let, or hired out to be occupied for living purposes. That's not in the PDO.
Yep.
It is in the PDO?
Mm-hmm.
Definition section, right?
Yeah, right. I mean, that's.
Because I looked for it in the definition section online. I'm looking at the online.
Well, let me, I'm fairly certain I pulled that from, I'm fairly certain I pulled that from the, we have a couple definitions of dwelling, dwellings, well, we have single-family dwelling, dwelling, single-family, we have various definitions, but I'm.
There are a lot of different definitions in the PDO.
Correct.
You know.
And some of them are juxtaposed.
More than we need to have.
Correct.
But, but this one definition, I didn't see it in there, which doesn't mean it isn't there, but I looked for it, you know, and.
Well, let's, I mean, okay, let's, let's look at that one, but if you go down a dwelling, single-family, then we do talk about rental.
Is that a state, is that a definition that comes from a state statute?
That might have been where I pulled that from. It might be the state building code statute for the occupancy class of a single-family dwelling.
And then, and then we also, you've listed a whole number of different types of, styles of dwelling that are really based on the design of the building.
Mm-hmm.
But then we also have definitions for bed and breakfast, boarding and rooming house, dormitory, hotel, lodging unit. And those are all places that people park themselves in on some kind of a basis, but there's, the definition diverges in the activity. So one is for, even under this definition of dwelling that I just read out, it says for living purposes, and you can distinguish between residing and just lodging on a temporary tourist-type basis.
I'm sorry, I was, I, we think that dwelling was, I was pulling from the, from the North Carolina Building Code on that one.
I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have talked. We have, we have as well as all of these different definitions of types of dwellings that are based on the way the building is constructed.
Correct.
We also have other definitions, bed and breakfast, boarding and rooming houses, dormitory, hotel, lodging unit, that are different from the dwellings. Because the dwellings, even, even the definition that I just read out of the one that says, you know, intended or designed for rental, is for, to be occupied for living purposes, there's an, there's an activity of long-term residing distinguished from short-term lodging in the hotel category. Can we turn a distinction on the activity rather than the shape of the building?
Yeah, but you're still going, if, if the idea is we have a concern regarding, regarding where that, where the predominance of the issues with short-term rental are, you'd still want to focus on the single and two-family, or really, the single-family units, wouldn't you? I mean, we can, I'd have to think through, through that, but if the problem that we're trying to solve is single-family, dwelling, single-family, then we have to, then we'd have to define what a, define what a STR is, and at least define it, and then put it as a permitted use or special use in each district.
Maybe, maybe our, our difficulty is with the activity, because I think if, if somebody's going to live in a place for, say, six months, you know, while they're building a house somewhere else or something like that, they're gonna, they're gonna come to know the trash pickup routine, they're gonna have an investment in the place, people will recognize them as neighbors and know their cars, and, and they're going to be living a regular day-to-day life and not having, you know, a big swoop of people down for a vacation with a contest on how hard, how high you can turn up your stereo. So it's a different, it's a different activity. Can we focus on the activity, find the activity? This is what they do in Southern Pines, is, I understand it from our, at the Tri-Cities meeting, we were talking about this a little bit, Southern Pines defines tourists, I think it's tourist home is the term they use. So it's, it's a rental for 30 days or less. And that activity is limited to certain zones.
Correct.
Rather than worrying about what kind of building it takes place in.
Yes, and that's what we're, what we're proposing to do is, would be do something similar, create, create a short-term, what I'm, what this is showing is where any short-term rental could currently locate within the Village of Pinehurst. That's what that's showing.
The current ordinance.
The current, the current, we don't have an ordinance. So what we'd be proposing to do is, what you're just, what you're just talking about would be create that, create that district, or create, create that zone, tourist home, short-term, short-term rental, and then, and then define it out by which, you know, which districts it could potentially locate in. Now, we haven't got to the, there's various approaches that we can use to regulate, you know, how we want to, if we want to look at, you know, which districts we want to put them in, will they be permitted, will they be special use permits, so there's, am I knocking like that? So that, we haven't got there yet. So what I'm saying is, this chart just simply shows where they can currently locate. That's it. But you're right, you're on the right track. We have to create, in order to regulate, we have to define. So that'd be step one. We have to define, we have to define what a short-term rental is, and that's an easy definition, they're all over the books, it's 30 days or less. And then we have to determine which zoning districts we want them to locate in, if any, or do we want to create our own special STR district?
Darren, if you created your own STR district, would short-term rentals be limited only to that district?
Yes, potentially.
So what if somebody lives outside that district and wants to rent their home out on a short-term basis?
Then they couldn't.
That's just one approach.
Yeah, that's just one approach.
It's one of the things that other, other towns and cities do. We may or may not choose to do that. I think we're at the point of defining how we can best maintain and protect our neighborhoods and the ambiance of Village of Pinehurst, but we're not, you know, we're not necessarily looking at one alternative or another just yet. That's where we are right now, that's the reason that this chart is here, to show us that we haven't got much coverage, if any, right now. And I think Jane's point was, you know, what other definitions we might need in order to sort of fit them into this chart, or whatever other chart we come up with.
What's the effect of our bed and breakfast regulation that we have now? Because we define the term, we say what zones it's permitted in, which is the hotel zone, and then the village mixed-use, the downtown zones. And, and we also have a whole long set of standards. And so.
A bed and breakfast, well, bed and breakfast is not a short.
Have any bed and breakfasts in the village that fit that category?
I don't even know if there's any bed and breakfasts in the village, I couldn't tell you. But, Alex?
How bed and breakfast is currently defined in the PDO is, basically, it's owner-occupied, so the owner is there at the time of the guest stay.
It's like a home stay.
Always the case. To strip it down into more, more simplest terms, an approach the council could consider is, you look at it twofold. You have the use table, which Darren has, you know, provided a condensed version, obviously, here in front of you. So creating STR in that use table, simply stating what districts it can be allowed or it's not allowed, and then define it.
Can I get into that, because I want to follow what really Lydia said. Why do we need to break this village into districts? Why can't we adopt an ordinance that applies to short-term rentals in general?
We can, but you'd still have, in order to locate, because you see all the districts that are up there.
Yeah.
So each, each of these, each of these zoning districts correspondingly has permitted uses. So you'd, so if we're gonna, if you were gonna allow short-term rentals, you have to then allow them in each of these districts, or if they're not, if they're not outright permitted in those districts, then they're prohibited.
What, I think what Darren's saying is, in order to regulate, we first have to define, and then we have to define what zones they're permitted in. That could be all of them.
Okay, well, that's where I'm heading.
Or it could be something less than all of them.
It looked like you were gonna just have a lot of different things out there. This neighborhood is gonna be defined this way.
Correct.
So I, I, that way, we, if, because some people may own short-term rental properties in various parts of the village, and it would be simpler if there was one set of rules. But, okay, I follow the logic, and we can get to it.
It all seems that we, I kind of missed a step here. You put out a white paper to us on email, Granicus is the one that, the first thing they talked about in that white paper was you need to set, identify your policy objectives. What are we trying to accomplish? Okay? And, and by jumping right into saying that we're gonna zone different areas they can be in or not, I don't think we've looked at the objectives. What are we specifically trying to do? Ms. Exeteris, I gave a very good presentation here in talk, and certainly she's put out a lot of emails on, on different things. We heard it from Ms. Putz, also talking, from a person who runs short-term rentals. And I think that both agree that there needs to be objectives in here that recognize the values of all groups involved. You've got situations over here where you have legacy people who do have a lot of short-term rentals, that purchased their, the properties with the intent of being able to use that, you have property right issues that are associated with it. You've got the, the environment of the neighborhood that's being affected by the, so anyway, when we look at this, I want to go back to the objectives, because I want to make sure that we're bringing the charm of Pinehurst, but at the same time also being respectful of people's property rights and what's going on. Okay? And so from there, then I think we can start looking at what are the different things we can do? How can we regulate that, or what ways should we do that? And that's a different argument, but the first is, what are our objectives and how we do this?
Well, I would think our objective is to place some parameters around short-term rentals.
Okay, to accomplish what?
To create, yeah, to create what?
I think it's the quality of life issues that have been raised. So we've, we've heard, you know, we've heard the often complaints about the, about the noisy party house, things like that. So I think one of those objectives is to, is to delve a little bit more into that. Now, we have party houses that aren't short-term rentals, so, so those, that, those things do happen, so we have to recognize that, you know, those might be things that we have to not just regulate short-term rentals, but we gotta, we have to upgrade our own municipal ordinances, so when we're having the same problem with the municipal resident, that's not a short-term rental, that we can make an enforcement action. But I think the basic mission is quality of life.
Okay, Darren, and I'll agree with you, that, that is one of the missions that's there. Okay? And that's, after what you're talking about, so it's simply saying we're gonna regulate, regulate for what? You answered one of those things, which is quality of life. Other ones on there that need to be, things we're looking for regulation is that we respect the property rights of people also. Okay? As to what's going on. We also have a financial aspect on this. Is there a certain amount of fees and things like that that should be charged for people running short-term rentals to make it more commensurate with what the hotels have? And so I'm not satisfied yet that we have a list of the objectives we're trying to accomplish as we look at short-term rentals. Okay? And not that I expect to solve it tonight, but I want to go, I think that's a first step. And that goes directly in line with what the white paper is that you put out. And again, that's referencing Granicus?
Yes.
Yes, Granicus.
Host compliance.
I thought, Jeff, I agree with that, I thought that was a very good, basic article to understand, and it does set out things that you should try to define, kind of sets it down to policies, you said, simple, simpleness, but enforceable. Those are the, those are the objectives that sort of guide some of the things that were said in that, in that paper.
Of the multiple things I've seen sent out on this, I think I've probably read 50 emails in the past two weeks on, on, on short-term rentals and different things.
Right.
But my feeling is that was the best roadmap forward for our village.
Right, I agree. But Darren, you have a way you want us to proceed here, and some objectives you're trying to get us to give direction on, so let's be guided by that.
Well, really, if we go to.
Jane, did we answer your question about the definitions, though?
Well, the.
You're taking a little bit different approach to that, I think.
Sorry?
You're taking a little bit different approach, maybe, to some of these definitions that.
I, I think, I agree with Jeff that we need to figure out our policy priorities. And in order to do that, we have to get a little bit of a handle on what are the issues, because looking, looking at what's happening in the field is, is one way of, of understanding it. Talking to people who have a short-term rental down the street from them, and they report in on factors and those kinds of things. But another thing we have to do is, we have to understand the regulatory framework, and we also have to understand the enforcement framework, because we don't want to try to set something up that's going to be impossible to enforce, or, you know, be, be a burden that way. So, so we have to look at all those things. And when we're talking about both policy priorities and, I think this also comes into the regulatory framework, to see the list of different types of buildings, I don't think is as helpful as looking, looking at it from the point of view of what's the activity. Because if you, if you think of it as, if you think of, say, well, I've got a building that's shaped like a house, I want to be able to either live in it myself, rent it out long-term, or rent it out short-term, and all those things are things I should be able to do with it. But if you look at it from the point of view of the activity, just because it's shaped like a house, residential zone is intended for people to live in over the, to reside, and that's, that's different from a commercial activity. And if you've got a turnover of short-term rentals all the time, that's more of a commercial activity, which really doesn't belong in the residential zone. And it's not because of the building shape, it's because of the usage. And that's, I think, helpful to, to think about as, just as a, as a perspective when we're thinking about this.
Well, there's two aspects to that.
From a practical standpoint, short-term rentals are only going to be in residential zones.
Southern Pines limits them to commercial, and we have mixed-use zones, VMU and so forth, where bed and breakfast, for example, which is as similar to a short-term rental as, as we have defined in our PDO, they're permitted there. So.
Not, yeah, maybe I should clarify my, my point. Short-term rentals are only going to be in residential properties.
Probably, and I think for, yeah, I think for general purposes, that's, that's clear.
If I might, I'd like to go, I think, I think Jeff, Jeff made the, it was a brilliant observation, we need to know where we're going, what we want to achieve, right? And I'd like to maybe just throw this out for consideration. Is the, the result that we ultimately are looking for something along the lines of, we want the impact of short-term rentals to be as similar as possible to the impact of long-term residential use in our neighborhoods?
Well, they just blend in practically. So looking at a neighborhood, if you have eight houses and two are short-term rentals, and the other six are, they all behave the same. Is that what you're saying? Is that?
Yeah.
Ideally, you don't know.
The whole idea is we're trying to, we're trying to eliminate these negative impacts in our neighborhoods, right? So.
I think that's as fair a definition as one could have at this point in the discussion.
Well, and to Jane's point, you could have, we have examples where you've got a house, and maybe it does the activity of short-term rentals, and it turns over every week, but everybody behaves the way they're supposed to.
Yeah.
But, but then, then what happens is, you have a very difficult and complex enforcement situation, where you've got to know which are the, which are the short-term rental buildings, and you've got to pay attention to all, all the nuisance factors, you've got to say, well, it's going to behave as much like an ordinary long-term residence as possible, that must mean that you're going to limit the occupancy, you're going to limit the number of cars, and you're going to be making sure that they have, the rooms are laid out. If you, if you read the bed and breakfast regulation, the standards in there say, here's how many rooms per building can be devoted to, you know, renting out, here's how many adults per room, you've got to have corridors or direct egress to the outdoors for each room, and the corridors have to be a certain width for fire safety, and you can't serve, you know, can't sell alcoholic beverages, and you can't serve certain kinds of, you know, all these different, very detailed regulations. Well, who's going to enforce that? Whereas, if you say, here's an activity, it belongs in certain zones and not in others, which is what they do in Southern Pines, they say if it.
I'm gonna have to clarify that with my compatriot.
They have a definition, I think it's tourist.
It's called tourist homes, that's correct. They don't allow tourist homes in residential districts.
30 days or less is a rental period, and it's only allowed in, I believe, the commercial zones.
Correct, a couple.
And so that if they get a neighbor complaint that there's a short-term rental activity occurring in a residential zone, then they can approach the property owner and say, that's not permitted in your zone. Period. Which is, which is maybe not the pattern that we might necessarily want to have, but the point being, it's clearly defined and easy to enforce.
And it's not striking the balance that we just heard from folks in the audience that we think we're trying to achieve.
So are we then going to look for a set of standards that we would have, similar to what we would have for a bed and breakfast?
I think we're still putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
We need the objectives of what we're trying to accomplish, and that, that's.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, actually, I think you're going way into the weeds in this. You're, you're talking about different ways of zoning and things like that, and I can tell you right now where the short-term rentals are probably at that are being used a lot. It's in, it's in the historic portion of Pinehurst. It's because you have a large golfing community. There's not many short-term rentals that are in Pinehurst 6. There are not too many short-term.
Oh, I don't know about that, Jeff.
Yeah, their DNA has, there we go. Is that from their DNA?
Yeah.
I think, I think.
So look at the, I mean, I looked at the map previously.
Lake area.
As to where the concentration is.
It's the condos concentrated along here.
That's where the concentration's at, okay? So I think it supports what I'm saying here. All right, so you don't have as many, yes, there are some that are over in Pinehurst 6. There's none that, as far as I know, that are in Pine Wall, because the zoning ordinance doesn't allow that, not zoning, excuse me, the PPA doesn't allow that. But I'll get back to, what are we trying to accomplish? Because if you were to say, okay, this region doesn't have it, and just pick your region, take your fistful of region, whatever it is, you've now just taken properties that are currently owned, that are currently being used for short-term rentals that were purchased, I don't know, five years ago, 10 years ago, 40 years ago? We just heard about, you know, that we had short-term rentals here for decades. Okay? So, so what are we trying to accomplish with it? And simply just saying that we're going to zone them out, that's not a solution. Okay? Because then you just violate a property right to things like that. We have to come up with the objectives. So if it's a quality of life issue, how do we solve that? How do we make it? By, is it going to be the, this is where I want to throw back to the, to the staff on looking at these things, and try to go the way the, the white paper kind of instructed us to look at this. Identify the objectives, come up with different solutions on it. There's going to be a police enforcement on this. Okay? Which ones can we enforce without enforcing? Jane, you're exactly right. If it's not enforceable, it's ridiculous.
Well, we, in order to figure out our policy, we have to understand the, the nature of the, of the activity that we're looking at. We have to understand what we can regulate and what we can't regulate, and we have to understand what's going to be, as a practical matter, enforceable, and what's going to be, just get us off in the weeds of complicated enforcement. And, and so what can we do as a practical matter to get at most of the problems?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you, only that I think, I think we'll come back to Jeff Sandmore's definition. That's, that starts to set a policy idea. And from there, then we work out, well, do we want this for all of Pinehurst, or do we need to get into issues of definitions and whatnot? But it's, it's that policy statement, that this is our objective, and I think everything else starts to fall from there. And whether, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it sounds like a couple of gated communities, this isn't an issue, right? Pine Wall, it's not an issue. You guys don't know.
It's not allowed.
It's not allowed. Okay, CCNC, I don't know for sure, but my hunch is it may be similar. It's not allowed. So we've, we've already shrunk in the zones, because we've taken out two large parts of our community. So let's look at where it is. There it is. So whatever we should come up, we should apply to those areas. We don't have to worry about the areas that are already prohibited.
I won't disagree with that.
But aren't we, I mean, the complaints have been the noise. We dealt with the noise with the noise ordinance. We hear cars parked all over yards. Can we regulate that?
Yes.
Okay? We hear, well.
Sorry, not, on yards might be difficult. We have the authority to do it. Practically, that's hard to do. On the, on-street parking is something that we certainly can.
Right, and I remember somebody from Lake District was complaining about cars being parked all over the yards in certain houses, and Darren said, we can't stop that. They can park cars all over the yards. They can park cars all over the yards. So, it's cars in the streets, it's noise. If, I mean, what are the, what are the other things that make our, I remember one time Kevin said, we're not regulating short-term, we, we want good quality neighborhoods, the quality of life thing. So, what is it that's going on with short-term rentals? And by the way, they do pay occupancy tax. They're supposed to, and, and the state gets a report, and it's all that's supposed to be taken care of. But what is it besides noise, cars in the streets? And what about too many people sleeping in a bedroom? Is that something that we can regulate?
We...
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to regurgitate the complaints we've heard.
We can regulate occupancy, like, for, for instance, if you did develop a standard, you could say no more than two pe, two persons per bedroom. So, those are standards that are not uncommon, and forcing that becomes a little bit difficult because we're not sitting in people's bedrooms and looking at how many people are in there. So, it comes a little bit different.
But we can look at how they advertise the place.
Yes, we can. Right.
But if some, okay, so if we see somebody advertising, and I guess it's more staff time to find it, but suppose we find out that somebody's advertising a two-bedroom house, and you're going to pack eight people in there, what's our enforcement mechanism?
We know that they're going to pack eight people in there?
They're advertising that way.
Oh, they're advertising. Then, then we, we look at, we, we would look at the listing, look at what the permit is, and then we'd have, and, and then we'd have, we'd send them a notice that they're, that they're in violation, and we'd have to treat it that way.
Go back to your phrase, look at the permit. What permit?
If we get to, if we get to the level of having an STR, creating it, what we would do is, like we do with any other use, you're required to have an occupancy permit, a development permit. So, that's...
Be an annual permitting process, perhaps, or multi-year?
I, I, some communities do, do the annual permitting requirement. I think that feels more like a license or a registration, so I think that might what have the...
All right, so be, several multi-year permitting. So, the permit is, the permit is our first sort of check on this.
Correct.
Because the owner is coming forth, signing up for a permit under the certain amount of rules or parameters we put up. And that, that is the item that can trigger us to do some enforcement.
It's, it's how we know who the rules apply to.
Wait, say that again, Jeff.
It's how we know who the rules associated with that use are applied to.
And I'm assuming if we did that, that's going to take more staff time. To, I think, I assume that's going to take more staff time, somebody to issue the permits, somebody to follow the permits, and is there a fee that can be charged for these permits?
Yes.
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 I know, I'm just, I'm trying to think of the complaints that we hear, and what we can realistically deal with, and what it's going to take to deal with it. And again, it's noise, which you're taking care of, cars parked in the streets, too many people packed in bedrooms, OL, the safety issues, like the smoke detectors.
Right.
And, and I think we've got a pretty good list of various emails we received here on, on different complaints that are there. What I'd like to throw out here is, is from this white paper I'm referring back to, is an example of some of the objectives. Number one, ensure that traditional residential neighborhoods are not turned into tourist areas that detriment of long-term residents. That makes sense to me. It says, ensure any regulation in short-term rentals does not negatively affect property values and property tax revenue. That makes sense to me. Ensure that homes are not turned into pseudo-hotels or party houses. That makes sense to me. Minimize public safety risks and the noise, trash, and parking problems often associated with short-term rentals without creating additional work for the local police department. That makes sense to me. Give permanent residents the option to occasionally utilize their properties to generate extra income from short-term rentals as long as they, as long as all of the above-mentioned policy objectives are met. That makes sense to me. So, so, that's what I'm talking about, for the objectives. Now, how do we do that? Now, there's, there's a couple of ways on here, and this is where I, I think that we probably will throw, say, if we're agreeing on these objectives, if there's any other ones we want to add, let's do that. Then, let's put it back into the, into the grinder here. Let's get some input from, from the, the residents. And when I say residents, I want the residents who are frustrated with the short-term rentals, because a lot of it's a topic I'm frustrated with, the noise, the parties, it's not so much the rental, so to speak, it's, it's the quality of life that's on there. Okay? But then you also have some input from the folks who are running short-term rentals, and they can talk about it and say, you know something? I don't have that problem in my house. I, 99% of the time, I rent it to, you know, couples who are in their 50s or 60s and just want to play golf. Okay?
How do we handle the Airbnb? The ones that, the ones, the distinction we need to make is between the people who live here and are, own this, and these people who live in Tennessee and own these properties.
It's a property rights issue, they're allowed to do that.
I understand it's property rights, but we're, property is in our village, and we, they're still going to need to get a permit, and they're still going to follow the ordinances that we may have adopted.
But, but that's, that's a slightly different issue here. It's, it's important, and it's actually, I like Jeff's going down that list, because it's, I've got the same list written down here, it's from that Granicus White Paper. And I think you ticked off all the key items that are problems. There are a few others that we would, you know, maybe consider, but that seems to be the framework, and the things we want to resolve, along the lines of what Jeff Sandborn suggested was the overall policy of trying to maintain the quality of life in our neighborhoods, something to that effect, right?
Yeah, I, I think all of that sums up to something like what I said, but...
Well, it does.
But that's, that's more definitive.
Yeah, and some of these things, as Lydia's saying, some of these issues we're trying to resolve are sort of, you know, obvious nuisance-type problems. The parking, the noise, the trash. Others are a little bit softer problem. You know, do they have a local agent, or do they reside out of town, as Pat was saying? So, that, I think, we'll, we'll get to that. But we really need to key in on, what's the policy statement? And these key points that have been pointed out by Jeff through that other article. And I think if we focus on that, that gives, starts to give you the direction that you need in order to go out and say, okay, well, then, here's how, here's what's available under statute, allowed by the state, to try to solve these six or eight different problems. Does that give a little bit of a framework? And I think you made a suggestion in your paper here, Darren, that, just as Jeff was saying again, you'd like to maybe set up, and you already have, to some degree or another, kind of an ad hoc committee that you can work with on this, and get the input from all the stakeholders who have an interest in short-term rentals, those that are agents, those that are property owners, those that are running to 50-year-olds, and those that are running to weekend golfers. But that's, that's a sort of step-by-step approach I think we need to have.
And it, it is. It all comes, it's going to start with those policy objectives. So, if the policy objective is, we're not going to ban short-term rentals, is the policy objective, we're going to promote or put them in certain districts? Is that one thing? Do we want to keep them in certain areas that can be...
That's, that's, you're talking in terms of solutions.
Yeah.
The, the objective is about impact.
But, yes, yes.
But that has a direct impact on the quality of life of the neighborhood if you're pushing it. The STR is only allowed over here versus over in this neighborhood.
That's solutions. That's how you achieve the policy objective.
Right.
And, and some of those, I just like your mentioning that, 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 some are far more unpalatable than others. And while I certainly am new to government, I've, I've had my share in large organizational leadership stuff, and what I'll tell you is, when I've seen multifactorial problems, it usually requires a multifactorial solution. And so, it's not going to be one certain thing that's going to solve our problem. And so, simply like zoning for short-term rentals, I don't think it's going to solve a problem. And, but there's things that can be looked at for that. I'm happy to look at other, other things anyway. I think we need to come up, much like that white paper said, start with those objectives, then let's start looking at it, how does this fit for Pinehurst?
Right.
Okay? Because it is different from other towns, and we, we had Brenda tell us before, this is the fastest-growing area in, in the country. Okay? I'm, I haven't gone on Airbnb and stuff like that, but that's an issue. Okay? And then you ask why. Well, there's market forces that are driving that. Okay? And with those market forces, you now have people who own properties and bought those properties. I received emails on here, just like I received emails from people who don't want the short-term rentals. I've got a bunch of emails that say, I do want the short-term rentals. I have people calling me on the phone saying, I don't want short-term rentals. I've got other people saying, I do want short-term rentals. So, I want to get away from just the idea of yes or no on short-term rentals. Look at the objectives, how do we work on this, and how do we come to a compromise that's going to improve the quality of life, maximize our objectives? And we're not going to make it perfect. We'll do our best, but we're still not going to make everybody happy and everything.
I don't know anybody who's opposed to short-term rentals. I will, I haven't heard from anybody about that. I'm certainly not opposed to short-term rentals. Okay? I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to them. Okay, I met my first person. I'm not opposed to them, but I think we need to have parameters by which we here in Pinehurst protect the quality of life that the residents here have come to expect. That's what I think should be our, our key objective. I'm not, I'm not part to banning them. They're investment properties for some, they're additional income for other people, that's all fine, there are some neighborhoods that actually ban them themselves, that's fine too. But I, I do think we need to come up with some rational parameters that don't allow short-term rentals to be a nuisance. In the, in the ideal situation, you don't even know it's a short-term rental, okay?
Right. Well, that, again, what you're saying is a little different way of saying what Jeff Sandborn identified, is the overall policy. It's sort of a, make it look like a seamless activity. It's not, it, it happens, but it's not known to be there. That's, that's an approach more, pretty general, to become more specific, I think, as we go along in this. But it's that sort of the idea. Jeff?
I'm not sure how long you want to talk about this tonight, but I might suggest that we go back and take a look at the, that list of policy parameters, or however it's defined, and as a staff, we'll put together a policy statement or a list of policy objectives for you to consider at the next work session, and then we can move forward from there.
You know, you guys... As a part of that, I'm sorry, Lydia.
No, go ahead.
Well, the other piece of data that I really haven't had a good chance to look at yet is this very extensive chart, the...
That Brenda sent?
Yeah. That was supplied to us, and again, thanks to Brenda. So, does, does, how would you use that in doing what you just described, Jeff, might be the next step? Would you reflect on that particular document that's listed, what, I don't know, 20 different towns and what they're doing? Or is that an example of data we'll use at it?
That's how, implementation, that's how, how to achieve different policy objectives.
To the degree you're familiar with that list, and I don't think any of us are as much as others might be, are there any particular towns on that chart that you would draw our attention to, to kind of look at and see some of the things that they do? So that when you come back with some of these ideas, we might be a little more working knowledge of how other places have done these things.
Well, it, it really becomes, you know, what, what is the approach that, that we want to look at based on the policy objective? Because there's some that permit them, and there's some that require, that'll, that require them to go through a special use permit process. So, those are, those are a couple of approaches. Some of them say you have to be 400 feet away from another, another one. So, we, we can, we can create a compendium of all those, you know, standards, that's, that's the easy part. It's really coming up with the policy objective to determine where, you know, what we're trying to achieve and how we're going to, going to do that. Then we'll look at all those factors, but I...
I think Southport, North Carolina has some permit process. Not sure how it works.
Yes, they do, and others...
Lot of it out there.
What I'm, and on that permitting issue, I don't know. A year or two ago, we were all told, and I think you researched it, it couldn't be done. Now, it turns out there are ways, ways to do it, which seems to me is, and it's written up in this white paper again, it's, it's a very integral part of this whole process. So, there are ways to use permitting that are out there.
It all hinges on the Article 11 and 12 qualifying language that's in the current restrictions on permitting.
Current restrictions, yeah.
In the general statutes. And, as I point out to you all, the, the bill that's still out there and active, and potentially could be acted by, on, by, by the Senate, would strike that qualifying language, which would effectively remove our ability to do any permitting.
Because permitting to me, and I think Jane touched on it earlier, and Lydia as well, permitting to me is where the, the whole enforcement objective starts to, to be there. You really have to have some sort of permitting, or registration, or whatever you can call it, to make this effective and enforceable. And enforceability is really key to making, to meeting the objective that, that we would have of solving this, this problem. All right. Jeff's made a suggestion about how the staff could pull some of this together and bring it back to us. Is that agreeable to council, and do you have any other...
It's agreeable to me.
Whatever issues or ideas to bring in?
Back in our next meeting, and give us something to look at in writing, so that we will, we'll have some, something hard.
Logical next step for us, I just don't want us to lose sight of what's going on in the legislature, because you've got three major players, you've got Raleigh, you've got Asheville, you've got Wilmington, and I'd rather be a part of that process as soon as possible, not too soon, than wait and have a hammer fall and our voice wasn't heard. Because Pinehurst is unique, and we've got something precious here we're trying to preserve, and if, if there's any way we can communicate to our legislature what it is we're trying to do to protect this, our gem, let's, let's keep that in mind, because something, if it doesn't go our way, then all this is for nothing.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good point. We need to think about how we work forward on this.
And, and if it, if it all hinges on permitting, if we've, if we all want, want to say that our objective is to regulate the activity of short-term leasing, so that it is not a nuisance, then we're going to have to have permitting, we're going to have to have elaborate standards, and the white paper, if you keep reading down, then goes through the different kinds of permitting, the different kinds of standards. If you don't write the standards of the permitting process correctly, you end up with a, an enforcement nightmare, or not able to get the result that you're trying to go after. If we have permitting, and we're willing to put the effort and the manpower into doing all that permitting, and then following up on it with enforcement, that's, that's one way of doing it, and that's one way of attempting to allow continued operation of this activity in our residential developments to a certain extent. But if permitting gets taken away from us by the legislature, which it might, it's House Bill 911, I believe, or if we are, we discover that it would be so cumbersome to try to do this, if we've got hundreds and hundreds of these units, and more to come, I'm sure, and every single one of them, you've got to go out and count how many bedsteads and...
Yeah.
Then, and, and maybe another way to deal with it is, is to say, you don't have to have a permit, you don't have to have a permit, but you're going to be limited to certain zoning districts where it's not going to be an imposition. And...
I just... That's another approach, yeah. It might come to that. Pat?
I, I say to the staff, try to keep things as simple as possible, so that we can build consensus and be able to defend this. I think part of what we hope is the outcome is that what we adopt, if it's sustained, becomes a deterrent to bad behavior. I mean, I really think that's what, we, we really need to, in a way, deter those handful of people who are probably maybe abusing the short-term rental process. The vast majority of these short-term rentals, 300 of them, I don't get anywhere near these complaints that get to the 300 level, okay? But there are, like everything else, there's a few bad actors that are giving some short-term rentals a bad name, but they are legitimate business, particularly in the, in our village of Pinehurst.
We started with short-term rentals.
Right. So, that's right, the original cottages that Tuff's built, so...
That was a little different kind of short-term.
It was a little, yeah.
In whatever...
One person in charge of the permitting, but...
Yes, yes.
But we should try to keep it simple, one that we can build a consensus around, one that's defensible, and one that'll end up serving as a bit of a deterrent to bad behavior.
And if we can come up with a permitting process that's effective, humane, and practical, maybe then our part of the conversation with these other towns that you're referring to, Lydia, can be, there is a way to do this that works, as opposed to saying, not at all, except in the commercial zones.
But those towns are already implementing... But those towns are already implementing permitting exclusions.
Right?
They are, they are able to-
Permitting exclusions.
Does Raleigh have permits? Because I heard that was a good-
Raleigh has an annual permit.
That's, I think, yeah. All right. The only other sort of caveat I would ask is that we move with some pace on this and get as far along as we can to implementing something as soon as, soon as possible. Because we are, you know, we're under siege at the moment, and we need to find a way to get that under control.
The next is the policy statement, just the list of our policies, like Jeff said. Is that what's next?
Objectives, yeah. What we're trying to achieve.
Policy objectives.
Objectives, and then how do we get there?
Yeah.
Next step.
That's the next step.
I think that may color our objectives to a certain extent.
Could be, could be. All right. I think we're all clear on that, then, what's going to happen, and we'll be, this will be in the work session next time and probably the time after that, so it's continuing discussion. Darren, have we-
I'm happy to-
Gotten us, gotten us and you to where you want to be, and Alex and you? Were there anything else on this, on this issue you want to discuss?
I was just ready to write an ordinance, so.
I was gonna say, I was just gonna say, you can put together a draft ordinance that we could look at also.
That's the easiest thing for me to do, actually.
Don't hesitate, okay?
Very good.
This is, this is important. We can't, we shouldn't be jumping. We have disagreement even amongst council right now about what we're trying to achieve. You can hear it, right? So let's settle on what we are trying to achieve, and we can fall, and then as we're crafting the solution, we can continue to point back to the solution or the objectives that the council agreed upon.
Well, Jeff, to that point, some, I think John or somebody had mentioned having a group of people with different points of view, and I don't know, you know, step number one, list our policy objectives. I don't know if step number two is that group, but I think that's an important, that's an important thing.
Well, it's really an idea that Darren had, have a little ad hoc group to work on this. We may set that up after the next, after our next work session, if needed. Okay. I think we should move along. Darren, please?
I think one of the, one of the issues with establishing policy objectives is really a lot of that needs to, we need input from you on what those policy objectives really are, because it's harder for us to develop your policy objectives. We can implement your policy objectives. We'll come up with some basic ones.
Great start point already.
Yeah, we do, and that, but-
Right there. Are they your policy objectives?
But Jeff, I'm-
Just draft something for them to consider, and they'll tell us what they do and don't like about it. That's, this is easy.
But I like what you defined 30 minutes ago, or whenever it was, as the overall objective. I think that's a good starting point, and I think we're all in agreement. That's a pretty good point.
In my mind, like I said, that, that list of policy objectives, this in the white paper?
The things to correct, but I-
They all make sense.
Yes.
But I think if we look at it more broadly in terms of the, just the impact, we might find that there are other, more specific policy objectives that fit under that category as well.
Yes, okay. All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move along to the next subject. Nobody's moving places, because we're all the same folks, but should we get into the small area plans then? We can stand up, take a two-second break? You all set?
I guess I'm all set. I'm actually not sure, after some of the comments that we heard tonight, which were very good comments that we heard, comments, some new, some that I haven't heard before. I want to start off with a picture from the open house. So you can see that there's me talking, so I had a lot of good, at the open house, I did have positive comments. I don't want there, we thought that there were no positive comments. We had some positive, Alex had some positive conversations. I have, see, I still have a smile on my face. So, so-
Where's that shirt?
That'll be next, that'll be next week. All right, so, let me get into-
Open house, one picture?
I have more pictures. But, all right, so last week, I want to recap a little bit of last week, and then take you down a path, and I can't figure out, I got the picture off, so you can just look at me. So we, last week, last Wednesday evening, we hosted and conducted an open house, public workshop, to unveil and receive some public feedback on the latest draft of the small area plans for the Village Place and South, and Pinehurst South areas. I think we had approximately 108 participants, and that wasn't counting staff or, staff that attended the workshop. So we thought from a, from a, from a turnout perspective, you know, it was a pretty good turnout. We had thought, or we thought. Some of, some of the concerns that were raised about the lighting, we picked up on that right away, and we tried to figure out what we could do to, to increase the lighting. We did not know the lighting was not that good. John and I actually talked about it. We tried to move the boards closer to some of the lights, but we couldn't move them too close to the wall, because we couldn't be pinning people back there. So we did look at that. We got some comments, we took pictures of all the boards, we're still compiling that stuff, I'll get that out to you shortly, but we did get comments. We got good comments. There are, there are very good comments that we've got that we can respond to. There's no issues with that. Little bit of background. This process really, you know, when we started this process, it was based on recommendations in the 2019 comprehensive plan that recommended the village conduct the SAPs for the two areas. The SAPs begin to set the more specific and set the vision of what could be for that area. They do not, you can't hear? Can you hear now?
That's more better.
I'm going to blow everybody else around here. All right. We're, where is I now? Okay. The SAP begin, begin to get more specific and set a vision of what could be for future development in the areas. What the SAPs don't do is they don't, they create a vision, but they don't, they don't set what's actually going to hap, happen there. Things can come together for that to happen. We have to do things like change the zoning, adopt updates and things like that, but it merely sets a vision for the area. The plans aren't regulatory. So the 2019 comprehensive plan recommendations in general for how these areas should look in the future in terms of land use intensity, and that was, are, are specific charge based on the comp plan recommendation was looking at the mixed-use areas. And if you pull the, each of the focus area plans, they had a very general showing on the maps of, you know, mixed-use, stacked residential, things like that. So that was kind of used as the basis. Jane, it's in the focus area. I can pull them up right now. I know you didn't like it. I'm just saying, it's in there. So, the feedback that we've gotten along the way was through very, you know, we had previous public workshops, we had stakeholder interviews, which included members of council and other stakeholders, we had surveys, and we had numerous work sessions with council. It was last council, but we had numerous, numerous work sessions with that council. I think the last one that we had on it, or the last two sessions were about seven hours, and we arrived at the, the proposed development plans that are in here. That was the consensus at the time. Jane, it was not your consensus. I understand that. I know you didn't like it. I was, we were moving off the consensus at the time. There was, I'm just telling you, that's where we were. So the product that you saw, the council, the last council, was always our sounding board. You were always the ones that we were, we were feeding up things to you, that you were giving us direction. You gave us the direction that we move forward on this plan. Jane, you did not like it. I understand. So what are these plans? Again, the plans are a vision of what could be for future development in these areas. They do not actually create the future. There's other things that we have to do to create the future, mainly change the zoning. They create the basis for subsequent action for council. So we adopt a plan, we initiate a zone change in an area. Same thing could be said about the comprehensive plan. We adopted the comprehensive plan with all those recommendations, but we didn't, that didn't automatically rezone any of those areas for any of those particular uses. That's phase two. The comp plan's up here, you have to get at ground level to change zoning. So really, you know, we're at a point now with these plans that we need to figure out, you know, what we're going to do with these plans from a council's perspective, and which direction you want us to take this. I need, we need some specific feedback and direction that you, that you would like to give to us in the form of these plans, so we can take that back to the planning and zoning board, and we can vet through some of these things. That is, that would be my, and that would be our recommendation. I still like the recommendation that was brought up tonight about having another additional set of open houses. We can have that. I don't, I have no issue with that, getting additional comments, but somebody has to then take those comments and then look at them and apply them to these plans. And that, and the body that I think is the best to do that is, once, once we figure that that's direction to go, would be the planning and zoning board. So I, I'll lay that out there for, for comment, and then we can go into, if you want to go into specifics about the plans, anything like that, but we, what we need is direction, which way we're going with this.
Sure. Let me, I'll try and make some observations, summary comments of things I've observed over the last months, weeks, days, hours, and all the communication on this. But I want to pick up on a, on a statement you just made, make sure I understand this, Darren. I think you said something to the effect that whatever might come out of another group meeting would have to meet these plans. I'm not sure if that's what you meant, and-
No, we, no, we would evaluate, we, first of all, I want, we would like direction on the content of what's in these plans and what we need to further examine, because in order for us to make any potential adjustments, we have to get some feedback from you all-
Right.
-to determine, okay, if you don't like, I heard it tonight, if you don't like commercial over on Magnolia, then we can pull that back. But I will tell you, we had that discussion, we spent hours on that discussion, and that's why it went from, if you look at the low-intensity and high-intensity plan, they both had residential on both sides of Magnolia. We did not settle on that. That's why we moved to the commercial. We changed commercial on the north side of Rattlesnake, which was residential, because there was a concern that we couldn't control the quality of the residential in that area, and we wanted to have more, more commercial up there, potentially medical offices, and that's why we changed the landform in that area. If we want to reevaluate those things, that's fine, we can reevaluate that, but I need some, that's the kind of direction that we need. If we need to better connect these neighborhoods, if we need more green space, all those kinds of things, we need to know where these, where these plans are falling short.
Okay, so comments like that, from council, potentially from-
It's for both areas.
Members of the public.
Correct.
Another meeting of sort, that, that's something that is appealing, or at least could help resolve some of these-
I would hope so.
Okay, now, here's a few things that I think I've been hearing, we've all been hearing over time, that seem to be of concern. Some were mentioned tonight, some have been talked about for, for months. I sort of call them basic fundamentals, and I won't get them all, but here's a few. There's a concern about LOFA, the Land Use Financial Analysis. That question's been around for a while, and some comments were made about it tonight, but they've been, been made before. So I'm not going to judge or ask you to respond necessarily, but let's just identify some of what I think are critical questions that people in the council and evidently some in the public want more answers about. So LOFA and how that is used or not would be, would be one of the areas for discussion, I think. Another would be the whole traffic generation issue. On the one hand, if I'm reading the plans correctly, the traffic generation numbers are numbers that would be achieved or received some years out into the future, right? They're not, they're not, you know, from the day one that the plan is laid out, or some construction and renovation happens to be made, either in Pinehurst South or Village Place, they're going to happen over time. Nevertheless, you know, there is concern about how that traffic would grow based upon things that are in the, in the plan today. And I think traffic congestion has to be something that we continue to deal with, and it's around us in many ways, and we're trying to do that. The other, another question is the zoning, getting to the point of how we would zone each of the districts, and how sub-parcels of the districts would be zoned. And I think you pointed out a couple of times that those are really things we need to do, and they will happen, but it hasn't been cleared, at least some of us to this point, you know, when that would happen, and that there would be zoning discussions on specific parcels in each place. What else? Yeah, overall, what I will call issues of density, density potentially of residential, density potentially of just buildings that are, you know, laid out in the plan, and I realize this is a plan that isn't to be built, it's an idea of what could happen, but the concern is, what is, what is density? And are we trying to do too much, especially in residential, and therefore creating more traffic, creating more density, creating pressures of population that we don't need? And I think the final, a final point, and I'm sure other council members have comments on this, is the idea that unlike other areas, unlike other towns in North Carolina, even in Moore County, for sure, you know, Pinehurst is, we're not in need of creating commercial activity, we're not in need of creating large residential change, we will have growth, we're zoned for that already. The result of these plans will create some. But the issue is, we don't, we don't need to have every type of housing, or every type of commercial activity, or every type of business activity here, just because people out there want to have a, have a demand for it in Pinehurst. I think we have the objective, and somebody commented on it tonight, actually, of what's the best mix for the future? And how can we protect what we have, grow appropriately, manage that growth appropriately, but not put extra pressure just because towns around us or developers have an idea that Pinehurst is where they want to build because of the growth that we've seen so far? There may be a much better way to describe that, but I think you know a little bit of what I'm trying to say. So those are some fundamental issues that I've been thinking about for some time, we've certainly heard from the public about it, and I think need to be addressed in the follow-up that will be done from this. that will be done from this, from this meeting as the next period of time unfolds. So I'll stop there and let any of the other council members talk for a bit on the same direction that you're seeking. Anybody want to comment? Jeff?
Yeah.
Keep it, keep it direct.
Are we, are we talking this evening about process going forward? Or are we talking tonight about the substantive issues of the plans?
I guess I was trying to identify what I call the fundamental issues that I hear people talk about, themes and problems with what people have seen so far, or reactions that they need more information to solve. Not so much the process, but defining and answering those questions that people have had.
I would like to say something about process. I really do hope that we would have some kind of a public open house, I don't know what you call it, town hall, where, a dialogue where the council and the public and our staff, I know what they're talking about, can talk to each other and ask questions and get more, I don't think we've had very much input. And I'm sure it's, you know, mostly to do with COVID and all the restrictions and so forth, but, you know, 250 respondents is, is not a lot. And, and of the ones from the, you know, the first zoom, the second zoom, and the Fairbarn, I mean, I'm in there three times, I think most of the council members are in there at least a couple of times, and our staff is in there. So if you start, and I don't know if we counted the members of the consultant team, so if we take all those people out, we're, anyway, it's not a lot of people. And the Fairbarn was a way to, I guess, introduce the plans, but it was not a real good opportunity for communication either to the public or to get it back from the public, just because of all the constraints of the situation. These plans are complex. I find them confusing. I find the question of having such detailed plans down to, and some of the rendering showing the cars, you know, that are going to be there, all those, I've said this before, those, those little building footprints, icons that are all over, well, that's not where the plant, the buildings are really going to go. Well, then what are you putting them on the plan for, you know? It doesn't, I find that hard to understand, to hear that such detailed plans are really just ideas, and it could end up being something completely different. And I've struggled with that now over a period of many months. I think somebody who's coming to it and just seeing it for the first time has got to be thinking, what are you, you know, it's going to be very difficult to wrap your mind around. I don't see any zone boundaries on the plans, which makes me very nervous, because I think we need to have clearly established zoning districts. And so, and I know that the council had a chance to talk to staff last summer, but we haven't really had very direct communication with the consultant. And we can talk about consultant management going forward another time. But right now, I think we need to be able to hear more from the public and let the public ask questions and talk to us. So I'd like to have another, at least one session like that, and I'd like to then have the council crunch that information and the count, I don't want to send it to the planning and zoning board until the council's had an opportunity to crunch it and say, because I think there are some actually fairly major ways that I'd like to see these plans change. These plans, I think, were designed, and everybody says, oh, they're long-term plans, that's 30 years or 50 years, but they look to me that they're based on the marketing analysis, and that the marketing analysis says you're not going to be able to sell offices in Pinehurst South right now, or any for the foreseeable future. So therefore, you should put in small, you know, high-density housing units, because that's going to sell fast right now. So it looks as though it's being designed for maximum rapid build-out, and that, that makes everybody nervous, makes me nervous, that we're pushing growth, and we don't need to push growth. The marketing analysis says high-density residential units are selling fast now, and then we've got the 2017 land use fiscal analysis that says empty multifamily units, which is two-thirds of them in that report, will effectively pay for, their taxes will pay for municipal services for other units that don't bring in enough tax money for the services they need. But the plans don't consider Pinehurst South's inherent constraints. It has limited access. The only ways in and out are Route 5 and Monticello, and it has limited traffic capacity on Route 5. So I think we should look at that limitation and design to that limitation, rather than the other way around and say, well, what can we sell? And then, oh, well, if it's going to make a whole bunch of traffic, there's nothing we can do, even if we build the Western Connector. The Western Connector is not going to take local traffic off of Route 5. And what we know from the DOT's cell phone studies in 2013 is that the vast majority of the traffic on Route 5 is local. So somebody who's trying to go from Lake Pinehurst to the post office isn't going to go via the Western Connector. The Western Connector won't solve the big problem. It'll solve a small percentage of the problem, but it, that will then be overwhelmed, that benefit will be overwhelmed by the massive amount of additional traffic we're putting out there. So, so I think we need to start with what is the capacity, the infrastructure capacity of the area, and how can we then put some uses in there that are going to fit the area? And that, I think, is where the idea of the Turnberry Woods small-scale general offices that don't have a lot of visitor turnover, that aren't retail, that don't have people coming and going, not the big-box stores, not the grocery stores, and not the high-density multifamily comes in. It's important, it's important to consider the property values within these small areas. But the property values and quality of life in existing nearby neighborhoods is also important. And we have to design the development that's going to go into both of these small areas with an eye to how they will mesh with the neighborhoods that surround them. So for example, in Village Place, what's, where is all that traffic going to go? Those 7,000 or 11,000 or however many, you know, depending on which variation of, what neighborhoods are they going to go through? Are they going to be cutting through the little residential neighborhoods around the Village Center? Are they going to be cutting through the little residential neighborhoods over by the elementary school? We aren't, we aren't looking at that. We aren't looking at, the parking is another one. Are we going to do a comprehensive parking analysis and make sure that we're going to have enough parking in the Village Center for their needs, and enough parking in the Village Place for those proposed needs, so that we don't get stuck on parking? Because parking's an itchy issue. The public works on Monticello was addressed a couple times. I've got a lot of problems with that. If, if public works doesn't fit in Village Place, it's not going to fit in Pinehurst South. It's going to be very, very expensive to purchase the additional lots that we need and then to realign the street. I mean, we've got land up on Juniper Lake Road, there might be other land, you know, down on Route 5 close to Trinity, I don't know. But it seems that, that that proposal to put, for the public works in the middle of a place we're trying to design, you know, to be nice, that's got residential neighborhoods already nearby, existing residential neighborhoods, and is right on the edge of our historic And then I am very concerned about moving the dividing line between residential and commercial on Magnolia. The dividing line now is right down Magnolia. And there's going to be a dividing line somewhere, you can move the dividing line one way or the other, but there's always going to be a dividing line. And if we move it over to the west and say, okay, well, let's match new development, make it commercial to match what's going to be on the brewery side of, of Magnolia. All that means is that you're putting the dividing line now next to existing homes. And the idea is to have all the new commercial buildings on the west side of Magnolia, be, have the buildings right up on the street or the sidewalk with the parking behind. So that means that the people now who live with their homes, with the backyards backing up to parking lots and all commercial traffic, headlights, noise, you know, evening hours, weekends, all the rest of it. That's, that's just, in my mind, that's just not right. So there's a lot of, of things about the small area plans that I, I think we need to rethink, and I'd like to get the better input from residents, because we should be doing this the way they want it done. Sorry.
Thank you, Jane. Jeff, would you like to speak at this point? And then we'll move over to Patton.
Sure. Jane brought up a couple things that I totally agree with, and that's process is important. And transparency is huge, being able to make sure that citizenry can see what it is. And one thing that I firmly believe is that while you may have an opinion about stuff, you don't get your own facts. And so we need to answer the questions as best we can, honestly what they are, and accept those as what we're working with. From there, I also agree with Jane, that needs to come back to council, because there are going to be some philosophical differences, and that's what we need to hash out. That's our job, to make those decisions and make those calls, because that's not going to please everybody in the community. Okay, you're going to have people on one side or the other, that's our job to take the hit, not your job to take the hit. That's what we're elected for. So I want to make sure we're doing our role, and then actually giving the philosophical decisions as to what it is and then moving forward. I appreciate the process you went through before, okay? I agree, I read the comp plan, and I feel that the small area plan is an accurate reflection of what I read in the comp plan moving forward. Granted, I wasn't here voting on it, but as stuff I read, I think it was appropriate in that. I don't think we're getting into the philosophical questions right now. We've heard some, some stuff here tonight, we've heard some stuff, I certainly have read a lot of emails from, from folks on both sides, some people who love the plan, some people who hate the plan. I think the next phase for us is, is the process, though, and being very transparent in answering all those questions and memorializing those questions. So and other people who didn't make the meeting, they can go look at it and say, these are what the questions are already asked, these are the answers and how we're working it, and this is how we think we can go forward with it. And I do understand that this is a living document, okay? And we can change and things like that that move forward. From there, I think we're going to be able to take that list of questions and answers that are there, those facts that are there, and then come together with the council and be able to give you more direction as to where we need to go, because we are going to have to hash that amongst ourselves and decide what the consensus is now, okay? And moving forward. Last thing I will say is that I do recognize there's, there's lots of feelings on this, it's a very hot topic, some more so than others. I do think there is a difference in the different areas we have in Pinehurst. Pinehurst's core center in the historical district is different than Pinehurst Number Six. It's different than Pine Wild, it's different than CCNC, it's different than the southern area. So we don't have a requirement to simply mimic what the historical district is in there to other parts of the small area plan, okay? And so we'll come together with that. But again, that's the council's responsibility to make those decisions that are philosophical differences. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Jeff. Pat?
Thank you. I was, I read the plan. See all my yellow posters? And I'm impressed with the comprehensiveness of it. I am unimpressed with the recommendations and the direction it's going. I'm a firm believer then, and when it comes to growth, traffic, and all that, our first rule of thumb, at least for me, is something taken from the medical precedent, which is do no harm. And I think, I see things in here that will be harmful to traffic congestion and infrastructure going down the road. A handful of issues. Number one, I think it is vital that the consultants come before this council and take us through this plan. These are their, this is their work product, their recommendations, they were, received compensation for putting it together. You all shouldn't be here trying to present their work product. This is their work product. So for me to even seriously consider it, I want to see these folks, I want to talk to them, I want to ask them questions, and I think we need to bring them here. I don't know, I'm not saying it's got to be done in the next month, I like the idea, the suggestion's been made of another group at the barn, or some more discussion groups, whatever. I think after those are done, they should come before the council. There's a few things in here that I'm, I'm not sure if they're sort of connected in a way of, that they are required for this plan as laid out to happen. Example, the public services issue that was raised, whether it's in Monticello or somewhere else, I mean, if that doesn't happen, does that mean that their plan falls apart in the South? I can't, I can't determine that from reading that.
Let me, if you don't mind, Pat, let me jump.
No, go right in.
It's a good point on this. Just to clarify on this. It's highlighted in that plan as an opportunity, because that's just what it is, it's just an opportunity. The plan doesn't hinge on that happening.
Good.
And we don't need the plan to be adopted in order to move the public services yard there. It's a completely separate decision that you all will entertain in the future.
Oh, good. I'm reading about it in the plan, that's what's prompting it. When, I realize it's aspirational, 30 to 50 years out, I'm really focused on three to five years. That's the way I, that's my horizon on this. I realize that some, I understand planning, 30, 50 years, whatever, for me, it's a three to five-year horizon. And those are the decisions that we make in the next three to five years that are going to impact us further down the road. I'm very impressed with the healthcare system in this country, and particularly here in Pinehurst, but I do not believe I am going to be here 30 to 50 years from now.
But we have to make, but we have to make good decisions.
I mean, Dr. Morgan looks a lot more confident than I do about that, he has some inside knowledge in that area. But at any rate, also, there seems to be this reliance, and I've heard it from various people, on form-based code. I'm not sure if this will solve obesity and male pattern baldness also in one breath, but we keep referring to it, and I really think we need a thorough education of what that means. Who's writing the form? Okay? Because that's a Because that's a big part of the solution, it sounds like to me. And maybe I'm sort of missing why that is so crucial to it because I don't, I'm being honest with you, I don't entirely understand it. I understand zoning, but the form-based code seems like, you know, it's magic dust or something.
I've got a book you can read, Patrick.
What's that?
I got a book you can read.
I think someone gave me a book on that, and I haven't read it yet. But anyway, I do think we need to determine the true cost. When I looked at their, the financial, the fiscal impact analysis, of which we heard from some comments today, from some of the speakers there, that we just should throw it out. I don't know if that's a good thing to do because fiscal impact analysis is supposed to tell us something about dollars and cents. But having said that, the fiscal impact analysis show that all these proposals are losers fiscally. You know, if you follow the data, though, you know, you don't want to be hooked on that dollar value, but by golly, we don't have a winner among these proposals. I'm assuming that that's, they've done the math. Excuse me. That's that issue. The, I heard the mention of the Western Connector. To me, that's unrelated to this. I didn't catch the connection, no pun intended there, about the Western Connector and this. That's, I don't believe that's in the DOT plan anymore. I mean, it's, I don't think we have money for it yet. Did they put money to it? No.
Not in the, it's in more counties adopted.
Ah, more counties.
Comprehensive transportation plan. It is not in the state's STIP.
Okay, that's where I was looking for. I'm very concerned about that. I think it's, particularly out in the Pinewild area, I think it's, the design I saw comes within 1,100 feet of some backyards in Pinewild. So I'm not a big fan of that, though I, you know, I'm willing to listen to more comments. So my, I'd like to, again, hear from the consultants. I want to determine the true cost. I want a lot more explanation on this form-based code. And I'm not into 30 or 50 years. Whether the plan is an answer to our questions, I don't know. I'm a little, and I don't know what would answer the questions when you listen to the residents in the village a lot who speak to you. Is there something where everyone's going to say, oh, my God, Nirvana, why haven't we thought about that for years? I mean, my God, here's a simple solution. Everybody can grab, you know, get around the campfire and sing kumbaya. I don't see that. But, you know, to paraphrase, was it Justice Potter Stewart when they asked him about how, you know, how do you define pornography? He says, you know it when you see it. Well, I'm going to know a good plan when I see one, and this doesn't grab me that way. But I will, the comprehensiveness of it, I am impressed with that. I mean, I spent some time on this. Last thing, this idea of a gateway, that we need a gateway into Pinehurst on Rattlesnake Trail, I really think the consultants are just out of touch. If you look at Rattlesnake, it's not a road. It's not a boulevard. It's a trail. If you drive it like many of us do on a daily basis, it's a trail because you're lucky if you can get two horses down that road, okay? The last thing we need to do on Rattlesnake Trail is to put too much more traffic on it. When you come down 211, there are six different right-hand turns you can make to get to the village. You can go down Five. You can go down McKenzie. You can go to Rattlesnake. You can go to Dundee. You can go to Page, and you can go all the way to the circle and come down Midland. I don't know why we need to designate one of those as a gateway. People come for different reasons of where they're going to stop and where they're going to get to. We've got a lot of kids, parents with strollers, young people on bikes going to Cannon Park. I don't want to see Rattlesnake Trail become a gateway to anything. I think we got to be careful of what we put there. And finally, I saw the number of, I think, 100, I don't have it handy, 100 parcels just in the Village Place area. Is that right? Did I say it was 100 or 70 some? It was a big number about all these parcels. And, I mean, that's a big challenge.
It is.
That's why, that's why I'm focused on three to five years and not 30 to 50. So I look forward to more discussion and input, and thank you. Thank you for your time and effort. I know you guys put a lot of effort yourselves into this. I got in a briefing from you, Darren, a while back, and that was very helpful. That's all I have. Thank you.
Lydia, thanks for your patience.
I don't know where to start. I feel, I've got so many disparate comments. One thing that's meant a lot to me is what does the public want? And when you go through this, go through the comp plan, and for example, the public has said very clearly they want different housing options, which is why I believe different housing options were put down in Pinehurst South. But to that point, so, and then the consultants came in, and you guys explained to us, you start with the comp plan. And I was told at the time that Judy Davis even went through public comment to make sure it was reflected in here, and she was satisfied that it was. And then the consultant said, they took this and they refined this to give us this. And there's been some criticism about we don't have innovation hubs. It's because the consultants came through and said innovation hubs don't work, which is why they put in what they put. So you go here, you do here. But also, I'm interested in what the public said the other night. I want to see what's on those little yellow pieces of paper. But another great source of public input, and Darren, I'm going to kind of toot your horn a little bit, I've been hearing from several people that you've been willing to sit down with them and spend a lot of time talking with them about this, and they appreciate that. So I'm going to assume that you're still willing to do that?
Yes, I always am, over any subject.
Okay, but I just, I want people to know that we're listening, and whether we have another session in here, however we do it, I appreciate your, you know, sometimes I'll look at this and I get frustrated. I got frustrated reading a lot of emails and what people were saying, that I just knew, having been through this process for as many months as I have, that representations that were being made were not accurate. And sometimes I've gotten the feeling that people have only looked at the back portion of this and not liked it, rather than understanding the entire process that we went through. And now I'm going to, I'm just going to kind of go through some comments and questions I had based on the emails we got and based on, let me see if I can pull this up.
Lydia, keep your microphone close because I want to make sure you're heard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there concepts in this plan that are represented all over Pinehurst?
Yes.
Can you give me some examples?
I think the Walker, I think Walker Station is an example of kind of the landform that the residential land that they're showing in the Pinehurst South area. So I think that, whether it be something like that or Royal Oak, which is just down on Murdicksville, what? Pinehurst Trace, I'm sorry, Pinehurst Trace, things like that from a residential standpoint. If you go to the Walker Station neighborhood, it's a very, that is almost like a form-based code built out there. So what you have is you've got, you have a variety of housing types. You've got all, I think, believe all the houses have porches. You've got connected green space. I think they have a pool out there. So it's a real neighborhood. What they lack in that neighborhood is really a place to walk to. I mean, that's what, you know, that's what was getting put into the Pinehurst South area, is you could actually walk hopefully to, you know, a restaurant, you know, things like that, a coffee shop. So that's one thing. When we look at some of the buildings in Pinehurst, in Pinehurst South as well, I think Gulf Pride is an example of some type of industry that could effectively locate in that area. So that's another example.
Well, my point is, it's not like you have gone to Mars and brought in concepts from Mars. You are bringing in concepts that already exist in Pinehurst. So there's a uniformity within the community that is just being also replicated there. So I wanted to bring that up. Want to see the notes. I guess maybe the most important thing is the willingness of staff to listen to the public. And I would hope, as you hear more comments from the public, that you'll share them with us. I mean, I think we're going to learn a lot from the yellow sticky notes that were up there. I actually think we've done a fair amount of public engagement. But also, this, and tell me if I'm wrong, this really is a 50-year plan. So we don't have to solve the problems right now. And another thing, I know traffic has been brought up, but, and boy, do we need to deal with traffic. But anytime we have, a council has looked at a major project, that project is not approved until there's a traffic analysis. So just because there's something on here on a 50-year plan, let's say a council 30 years from now is going to look at it, and Highway 5 has not been approved, I would hope a traffic analysis is going to be a reason to veto any proposed projects down the road. I mean, this is a 50-year plan. We don't solve problems now. But I would think somewhere along the road, we know right now we've got to start dealing with traffic weather. And I want to take the Western Connector out of our language. If a Western bypass, whatever you call it, Troy has a bypass, maybe we need a bypass. I don't know, but we've known for several years we've got to deal with traffic. I'm getting off the point, but a 50-year plan doesn't fix now problems that might occur 50 years from now.
Correct. I mean, correct. And what you need to look at or think about in that context is that the build-out is 50 years. It's not a 50-year plan itself, but based on, you know, based on the market absorption, current market absorption rates and the amount of square footage of each of the uses, the office, the retail, things like that, that brings it out 50 years. The shelf life of a plan like this is generally seven to 10 years. That's, that's how really the timeframe these plans are, are, not accurate, but they're relevant. Then you have to look at it in their 10 years and see.
That's another great point because I was concerned about engaging consultants for this, and we've heard criticism because we did New Core and all those others. And I sat down with you and Natalie, and y'all laid out all of our plans, and you said every plan has built on the prior plan. So none of these plans have been, they've all been good plans, and they've all been a part of the next plan. And so it's not like we tossed out the prior plans. The consultants looked at the prior plans and built on those plans. So that's another thing that concerned me when I saw it in the emails, is like, well, you've done these plans before. Why are you doing it again? Because every plan builds on another, probably for the point that you just said, because a plan has like a seven or 10 years shelf life. I just, I just feel like there's been so much misunderstanding about the process, about what we've got here, about, like, we have to look at just the back half of this and think that we need to correct every deficient, deficiency in here now, immediately, before we can adopt this. Not that, I'm not saying this is perfect. I think Jeff Morgan just said, we're never going to please everybody. And you even said in your staff memo, we will probably tweak this. But I don't think this is something that needs to be thrown out because based on my understanding of the comp plan and this, and hearing from the public, and there are people out there in the public who really, really like this, and I know they've told you that. I think, I like, I kind of like your idea, Patrick, of bringing the consultants in here and talking with us directly. But I don't think this plan is as bad as some would want us to believe. Because I think it is consistent with the top comp plan. We did get public input. You've worked your butt off talking to the public since this came out, and you will continue to do so. And by the way, he made copies of this available for Carol and Bob, and for those, for them to look at. Anyway, I, oh, and Patrick, to your, I know there's been a lot of controversy about gateway, whatever you call it. I know, I know. And we kind of struggle with that terminology, too, but it's just another way, if you look at the streets, it's another way for people to get down into that area. So I think that's all I had.
Okay.
Patrick, I think it's a, it's a very good chance you're going to make it seven to 10 years.
Thank you, doctor. Telemedicine at its best, you know.
All right. So everybody in the council's had a chance to make comments about points of view and reactions to particular pieces of total plans. Some directed it either Pinehurst South or Village Place, some just general about the way forward. The issue, I think Pat talked about it, but it may have been around earlier. What is the, and Lydia, you asked this question earlier in the week about the remaining contract obligations of the consultant. So if at some point, would the consultant be coming back to us? Is a part of that, or do we need to think about that in special terms? I'm not thinking too soon. I think we want to work out some of these other issues and questions and get that resolved. But then I think that we'll want to have the consultant back if that's possible.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it isn't, it's in the contract yet that during adoption, they'll be available for things like, we can get them to travel here, or we can do the video conferencing, things like that.
I would hope it would be here. I think in person if.
Travel would require probably an amendment to the contract.
Okay.
But.
Travel costs. Travel costs.
Yeah. Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Even though I didn't.
Ash.
Should be very.
Somebody talked about that earlier. Okay, we would support that, I think, to have the consultant here where we can interface directly with them and the public can hear that as well. I think that's a, that's a smart move.
Good idea.
So we'll think about that timing on how that would, how that would best work. All right. So we did some next steps with respect to the STRs. How do you, how do you think we should proceed here? I think we've given you maybe more direction or maybe more things to think about, but I believe the key will be the answers to those questions or the reasons why. And I think that's where some of the questions that we're asking and perhaps others are coming from. And maybe that gets to the point of a residential meeting. Jeff?
Darren might have a different opinion. Based on what I've heard, I think what I would suggest is that we sequence it like this. We try to get the consultants back here for a face-to-face engagement with the council to talk it out. Why is this in the plan? Why is this in the plan? Just to person to person hear their thought process and reasoning on what's in the plan currently. And on the heels of that, do some form of another town hall, public engagement opportunity that staff and council and the consultants, if they're willing to come do that, who are all kind of on the same sheet of music now, can engage with the public about what's, what they don't like and do like in the plan. And then have it come back to council to deliberate on what they've heard, what you've heard, make final draft changes, if you will, and then go to P&amp;Z.
Darren, can you make sure we get, I'm sorry to interrupt, can we get those yellow pieces of paper?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, is there, I don't know exactly how you're able to interpret and summarize the green dots on one hand and the sticky notes on the other that were given last Wednesday night, but is that, is that something you're trying to pull together and summarize the categories of?
We have all the pictures as well, so, so everything, everything was taken the picture of. We still have all the boards. I mean, I have all the boards yet.
Isn't that another important source of public input for us? It would seem like if you have the public come in and they leave their little green stickers and they write notes, that that would be an important source of public input for us.
It is, it is an important source of public input.
Okay.
It is. And there were some, there were some substantive comments on there that we can react to. I can generally react to any question. So it might not be the answer you want, but I can always react to, react to the question when I think something logically from a, from a planning basis, though. It might not be the answer you want, but I can always react to, react to the question, or I think something logically, from a, from a planning basis, so. I'll, we'll, we'll start to summarize that. We just haven't had the time. We've got them all pictured. We have all the pictures out, but.
Oh no, you wouldn't have had time to summarize that. Lydia, did you have more?
Oh no, I just, I keep going back to what Jeff Morgan said, is you're not gonna please everybody. So how do you just, how do you, how do you?
We'll get there.
I, I think that your comment you just made, Darren, is a perfect comment, which is, you have an answer to whatever it is you can, you can talk it. You may not be the answer you want, that's fine. Okay, because some people, it's what they want, some people it's what they don't want. Bottom line, what are the facts? And then we can go from there on the philosophical stuff.
Jeff, Sam, what was your answer to the question? How do we, how do we?
The same way, the same way we had to get through this with the comp plan.
Well, I wasn't here for the comp plan.
Right. The council, the council had to sit down and hash it out.
Yeah, okay. This'll be fun.
Now, from a, from a follow-up process point of view, do we agree that the, that the consultant should come and talk to us first? Or should we have some other discussion in a work session, or the public piece of it? How, how does that work out in people's brains, as to what, what seems the right?
I think there should be some more public activity before the consultants come to talk to us, because those, those public sessions may, may answer a lot of questions. And we may create new ones, I don't know, but we'll hear about it, and that will be part of our probably questions that we might want to pose to the consultants.
I absolutely agree.
I kind of, I don't know. It's, as you pointed out, though, this is the consultant's work. I mean, they were actively working with staff during these last several months, we know that. But it is their work, and I just wonder if we want to hear from them first and, and have them directly answer questions, rather than have staff continue to interpret it.
But it might, I do, I do think it might be helpful to hear some additional feedback, so we can start to categorize. We, we have the feedback that we've gotten already. Let me think, let me think, I, I think it might be helpful. So let, let's, let's, Jeff and I, let's talk through it. It's like, right now it's like drinking out of fire hose, so.
Chickens and eggs.
So I, I need to, let us, let us, because I've been listening to you and I have been thinking. So Jeff's been, Jeff's been listening, so let us, we will reconnoiter and think a little bit, and then lay that possibly, you know, lay that out.
Let's do a timeline, or what, what happens when in a sequence kind of thing. All right. Are there, are there any questions or issues, small or large, that, that we haven't touched on tonight, that you, that you have from others, or maybe from some of the public input last week? Are there any other issues that maybe we're not thinking about that are on others' minds?
No, I mean, I, you know, we can't, the plans, we, we thought were reflective of the point of, not you, Jane, I understand that. That's, that's typical. We thought that was the direction that we have. That's, that's the direction we went with these plans. There were some changes that we made based on that, that last set of, that last set of directives. So it's really, I, I'd have to look at, you know, some of that discussion points that we had, and, and there weren't a lot. There, there really weren't, from, from our last set, there weren't a lot of changes that were made. But I can identify those, Jane, I know, yes, Jane, I know. I know. But one, the consensus was on a few issues. Let me, let me look at those issues and try and see if I can't narrow those down. I know it will be everything with you, but I will get to the issues that we, we had the consensus on, knowing that you're not happy with it.
And you've already responded to some of our questions in the last couple of days.
I will always respond to questions as quickly as I can.
You've supplied a lot of information to somebody out there. Okay.
I just had another thought. This consultant has done several smell area plans, right? Is there, could they give us some suggestions, or be able to talk through various processes that various communities have used after this point? It might be helpful.
Getting from presentation to adoption, how, how that process has worked successfully in other communities?
Yeah, because I mean, it's the first time I've been through this, but if they've been through it several times, then maybe they might be a good sounding board and offer some suggestions like, well, you could consider this, or this, and something might really resonate with us, and, I mean, let's take advantage of that experience.
I can talk with them.
Does that make sense?
I'd like to. That may have come up when we selected them, or it's a question we might have asked each of the candidates for this design collective, and I, I forget what design collective said, but, you know, they, they certainly have follow-up points to, to recommend.
I, I'd like to hear what our residents have to say. I've seen what the consultants have to say, and I've, I've got a, not just tweak-type concerns, but I've got, you know, why did we ever go down this road type concerns? And I'd like to hear what our residents think.
That's what we're doing with the yellow pieces.
So I, that's what I want to start with. I, I'm not, I mean, eventually I want to hear from the consultants, but I, I want to start first understanding what our team wants.
I mean, I'm just trying to get their recommendations. Should we go step A, B, C, D, or A, C, B, D, or just, I mean, they have been through this before, and I just kind of solicit their ideas in terms of what are some possible paths forward, starting at this point.
I'm happy to have that, but I, I think coming back to a sort of general theme of this discussion tonight on this issue, and maybe short-term rentals for that matter, and it is, we, the council, with staff and resident input, will make what the best decision for Pinehurst is. And we can be guided by other experiences, for sure, but we need to do what we think is the best for Pinehurst, and not be guided by, necessarily guided by other things that, that people or groups have done. Jeff, you were waving your finger a minute ago about maybe the process or the seizures.
I know it's, it's late, and I hope to keep this short, but I'd just like to take the opportunity to try to clarify one big point that I've heard a lot about over the last week or so, and that's the land use fiscal analysis. It is true that there's a statement in the land use fiscal analysis that says that it might be used by future councils to contemplate the appropriateness of various types of development. It says that while it could be used that way, it's only one of many factors that should be considered. I recall that after presentation of that land use fiscal analysis, we had a brief discussion, councilman and staff, about potentially putting in place a methodology to use it, to serve those purposes. We never did that. From the time that land use fiscal analysis was presented to today, I think it's accurate to say that no council, past or present, has ever used it to make a development approval decision in any way. There's information in both the comprehensive plan and these plans that rely on that tool. I think primarily because in both cases, the, the consultants we engaged saw value in it. However, in neither case, as the council was deliberating on what should and should not be included in these plans, has, has there ever been any discussion about the fiscal impact? Period. It's never come up. So to the degree that there's, I guess, concern or angst in the community that we're using that tool inappropriately, the, the reality is, we just plain aren't using it. So that's what I wanted to say.
There is a section in the plan here.
It's there, that's right, John, it's there.
Right.
And as Darren pointed out, what's in these plans is what you all agreed to, not you all five, because two of you weren't here, agreed to at the conclusion of a, about a seven-hour marathon work session, and it never came up. Period. It's just, it's additional information that's in the plan. Nobody's, nobody's ever used it for a thing. Do you recall talking about it?
Oh, yes. Yeah. I think, I think the issue, though, has become, not that we have it, and some would feel shouldn't consider financial impact when making these decisions. But it's the calculation, or what, what the assumptions that were made, excuse me, the assumptions that were made about multifamily, single-family.
The point is, no council has ever used it to make a decision. It's not driving decisions in any way. It's never come up.
Yeah, it did not drive, it did not drive the, the current land use mix that's in the, it's in the plan. The, the analysis that's in there is just based on the, the current land use mix that's in the plan, based on the comp plan desire to have these mixed-use walkable environments. It just shows, this is a potential impact. It didn't drive the decision to do that.
Okay, all right, all right. So, we have some follow-up ideas, next steps to do. I'm not sure we're in agreement on whether the consultant talks to us first, or we, or we do some sort of effective, open meeting with resident input, as well as council and staff. But you wanted to talk through that, and I think you'll come back with what you want to do, and we'll, we'll think about what, how we see that too. Is that all right? All right. Okay, all right. Shall we move on to the next item in the work session, which won't take very long, I think? Other work session business, I would make note of two things. You received a email, which you might not have had a chance to read today, from Doug, just an update on the anniversary, Ross and Olmstead anniversary. And you can reflect on that and ask any questions, and if time allows, we'll bring it to the next work session. And then I had sent out earlier the Marshall nomination letter. Again, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that today, it's been a busy day. If you have any thoughts or comments, I'd like to know them. Otherwise, I'd like to move that letter along.
I did review it. I, I have no objections to it. It reads fine.
If you've had a chance.
It looks historically accurate to me, but I'm sure, it sounds also like more serious historians have looked at it than me, so I'll defer to their tweaking of it.
Are you comfortable with that, or?
What is his role in this? I mean, I thought there's, there's a commission, but this is going to the Garrison Commander, so I'm trying to make the connection.
He will, he will, he will have that in the file, and we're asking him to forward that to the naming commission. It goes through the Garrison Commanders at the different nine installations that are part of the process.
And I defer to our brag people on this. You guys okay with sending it to the Garrison Commander?
It's fine, yeah.
And I don't, is there any other business or future recommendations that people want to make to the, for our next meetings? Any other input tonight?
Is there an idea, what's on the agenda for the next meeting, just out of curiosity?
We, we have ideas, and they'll be, be added to it.
Serious, I mean.
Did you have something you want to?
I don't have anything. I just wonder, I was just trying to get a heads up, and what should I?
Well, we use this time, Pat, to suggest things that would like to be discussed at a future meeting.
I don't have any, I have no suggestion.
And so you feel free to do that. We're, we'll be catching up on something. All right, then is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
Motion to adjourn?
I, I think we're comfortable with the letter.
I don't think we need to vote on the letter. I think it's fine.
You're fine, all right.
Yeah. Second.
I will, motion's been made and seconded to close the work session of February 8, 2022. I'll accept that as unanimous, and we all can say goodnight. Thank you.